I believe we are all set now, so I will call to order the Berlin Boils and Regional Transition School Committee. As always, please remember this meeting is being recorded in your image and our voice may be broadcast. Public comment section of our agenda, do we have any public comments from our folks in the crowd this evening? Give that few seconds. If you have a public comment, please throw it quickly in the Q and A. Okay, I'm hearing none in an effort to move forward. I'll move forward if something popped up there shortly after. We can always go back to it, but we'll move the agenda forward. Hearing none. Item number three on the agenda is approval approval of our payroll payable warrants. As always, everything's going. Okay, there guys good?
Yeah.
Yeah. Everything's good.
Awesome. Okay, and under our consent agenda, item number four in our agenda this evening, we have I will need a motion for the approval of the two items on our consent agenda, which is the December 15th open meeting minutes in the January 5th superintendent evaluation subcommittee meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Roll call vote. Lori.
I.
Keith.
I.
Susan. Susan.
You're on mute, Susan.
Susan, you're on mute.
I. I. I.
Angela.
Hi.
Michael. Were you on mute there? Didn't hear you. Bye. Yep. Okay. Michael, you want to be go by Michael or Mike? Or what do you want to go by during meetings?
Mike's fine.
Okay, cool. Thank you. All right. Next time our agenda is item number five, which is our school community communication section. Do we have any communications this evening for members of our school committee?
Jim, I got something if this is the spot that I should ask it.
Yeah, if you have a communication, sure.
Yeah, so. Hi, everybody. Since I was named to the committee last month or earlier this month, I've heard from a lot of parents that just curious and wondering if there is a tentative plan or if discussions have even started or been thought about or considered about when kids have been returning to school full time. So I wanted to bring that up for them.
Okay. Thank you. I'm seeing that appreciate that seeing that it's an item not on our agenda. From a just from a school committee perspective, just from a rest of the committee members, we won't from that particular on that particular topic, we can't have a discussion about that this evening, but I do if if he had, if he wants to respond, I do want to give Jeff an opportunity to respond as obviously it's a message from the parents and the community and some of those might be listening tonight. So I want to make sure Jeff addresses it if he wants to respond.
Yeah, sure. I'll say a couple of words about it. I know there's a lot of anxiety in the community about this and you know, we look at a we look at our parent survey, it's about 50 50 parents who want to come back in those who full time and those who do not. So you know, so so in order to really understand this, we have to go back and understand how we we got to this place in the first place. And a lot of it, most of it really hinged on the fact that we went with the the six foot CDC guidelines for spacing in the schools. And so if you remember back to August and September, the school committee and the association, they agreed that that standard six feet would be used under those existing condition. Now, remember back then there were probably three to five cases total and positivity rate was well under 1%. I think it was point 38 or something in in Boylston at the time. In order for that agreement to change, something something else would have to change because we see our numbers growing. We see our positivity rate going up. And and so at this point, really, the only viable thing that could change that agreement or would say to the to the to the teachers. Okay, this is something we can look at would be a vaccine at this point. You know, remember, you got to remember a couple of things. They're they're probably the ones who are the most vulnerable in the schools. It's it's probably not the students. We know from the data now. It's it's most likely the teachers and and so I, you know, especially having had this thing now, it does concern me. But even if it didn't, even if you said, well, you know, they took the job and that's it. They got to do what they have to do. If they get sick, this is this is worse than hospitals. There's not a lot of people lining up to become a teacher now, even to be a sub, even on a good day, it's tough to get a sub. So you know, if teachers start to get sick, and that's the best case scenario, that they just get sick. There's not anybody left to teach our children. That puts us even in a worse situation because then they can't even teach hybrid. They can't teach remote. So I know the question has come up. Do you have any 10 of the plans? There anything in your head? And so we have what the leadership team started to talk about this. I know informally I talked to at least one of the union reps about this too, actually. Carol was on a meeting with me and we haven't put anything in on paper yet, and I'll get I'll tell you why in a second, but we really were hoping that we could transition back this year sometime. And I I know I talked to the school committee even about this and why that would be important to do it this year rather than next year. And there's some, you know, there were some, there were a lot of balls in the air here. So tentatively, we would look at a date like April, mid April, right after April vacation. Now that would hinge on a few things. One, the timeline for the vaccine for this is going to be available to teachers would be February through April. Once that happens, our teachers are vaccinated, I would feel a lot more comfortable even proposing this idea. And I think they would. They would too. And I don't think it can happen before that realistically. It didn't happen in you know, August when we had three cases. It's certainly not going to happen now. And you could understand the anxiety on the teacher's part. So that would be the tentative date we're looking at. April after April vacation. And with the vaccines in place, and of course, we would still maintain the six foot distancing. I mean, yeah, and and all the PP would be in place too. Excuse me, we wouldn't be able to have the six foot distancing. It'd be between three and six. I think we had an average of four and a half to five feet, so it wouldn't be too far under. We would. We would phase it in. We would start with the elementary schools. They have more room. They have students who are less vulnerable to this than than the the older kids. It gives the older kids a chance to get vaccinated in the upper grades, 11 12 graders. They're not that vulnerable either, but they're more vulnerable than say a third or fourth grader. The elementary schools have more room in them. How would we would come back? We're not sure about if we would come back five days or we would come back four days and still maintain that 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 day in the middle, that Wednesday, that's a sort of remote day and that we would have to talk about. If the vaccines come out earlier, then maybe we could talk about an earlier date, but I don't. I don't really foresee that. I would think that April after April break would be would be the time we could consider it. Now, if the vaccines don't come out and the teachers don't get vaccinated, they don't have that opportunity. I would find it difficult at this point myself recommending a full in. But certainly if we have that in place, I think there's a better chance that we would be able to safely come back. Now there's another issue. And it's not just if the teacher said tomorrow, oh, yeah, well, you know, we're just going to come back. No problem. We still have 50% of parents who who don't feel that's safe in our schools. And that group needs to be at least convinced or persuaded that the schools are safe. Because if not, what we would be doing is we'd be running 50% full in school and a 50% remote school. We currently we currently have about 10% students in our four remote programs. And if you just look at the high school and middle high school, this year we'll pay roughly about $80,000 to for the just for those students. If you increase that by 40%, you and but it'll be a half year, but you could expect that number to at least double. You know, you got, you know, you got you've added 40% in and it's only half year, at least double. I'm sure Bob has is doing the calculation in his head right now and sweating. But it's it's easy to assume we'd be talking about about $150,000 that we don't have. In addition to that, at the elementary schools, we're running the program and we have teachers who are wearing two hats. And we would have to hire more people at the elementary school to really get that done if you're going to run 50% of the the school remote, you know, 50% of this community remote, 50% in. We we don't have the budget. We just don't have the budget. Our budget right now is 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 very, very tight. Our budget for next year is going to be tight. The assumption would be that we we were going to save money this year. We're not saving money. We paid vendors almost full almost full freight, sometimes not even getting all of those services. Transportation is an example of that. I know Bob went over that with the with the committee last year. We paid them a pretty hefty percent considering they weren't transporting our students. So we're not saving money this year. We're actually losing money. So again, there's a lot of balls in the air. I do worry about the teachers. I worry that, you know, it's just worry in general, especially after having this stuff. We have a lot of teachers who are older. But again, we just can't afford to have them get sick and be put them in that position. I think the vaccines will be the thing that will be a game changer for us. I personally feel if we could normalize the end of the year for our students, it will make us put us in a lot better position last year. I always I've used this analogy with the with the leadership team. I started my job in September, I mean, January. Matter of fact, this January was three years. I didn't get any kind of presence from the school committee or anything, but that's okay. When I came back the next September, it was like I was here a year already, even though it was only a few months. And I would assume it'd be the same thing if we can get the students in even for a short period of time, just to have those those celebrations that we have in the spring that are so traditional, these graduations and the things they have at the elementary school. It will normalize it enough for them that they will come back the next year and it will be like this. I wouldn't say like it never happened, but we can get off to a good start. So
you know, Jeff, let me let me cut Jeff, let me cut you off. Let me cut you off there. Only because I want to. I want to. I wasn't trying. I didn't want to interrupt you early on as as you were moving there. And I wanted to make sure you were able to address it and answer the item brought brought up by Mike. I don't want to go into this right now. It's not an item on our agenda, right? And it's really not the appropriate time to be having the discussion because we really should. If it's a topic that we want to see on our gen on as an item on our next agenda for discussion where we can notify the public and let the public come on and you know, for all that stuff, have the availability to kind of hear what your plan is and that type of stuff. I don't want to. I don't want to come across as if we tried to come on tonight and and give an update with with not allowing folks the opportunity to be on here and listen, right? I don't. I don't. I don't want that to happen. So I'm what I'd like to do is it sounds like obviously this is a topic and area that we want to address. And I'd like to maybe you to be able to provide your updates if if they would like to a larger audience. So I'd like to if if it makes sense for the rest of the committee. I'd like to if everybody believes that I'd like to put it as an agenda item as an item on our next agenda so that we can make sure that we can, you know, let the folks know and anybody who wants to join to hear an update. Does that does that make sense with everybody? And I'll I'll take a quick, quick. Everybody seems to be nodding. Everybody's is there anybody not okay with us putting this as an item on our next agenda?
Would that be in February or January 26, Jim?
Right now, that would be in February, our next meeting scheduled date of February.
I'm sure that will be a busy one. Should we have an additional use that scheduled one on the 26 to discuss only this?
That is. That is an option. We do have as needed dates there for particular reasons. I would probably throw that question back on the rest of the committee and sort of see if it's a consensus if anyone thought that it was appropriate that we have this discussion sooner rather than later. It's a valid question. So I'll put it back out on the committee if anybody feels that we should have this discussion sooner rather than later. I guess I'll just go one one by one. Jeff, did you have something you want to mention? You seem to be.
I did. Did that rocket in the chair indicate?
Oh, yeah.
Ball. So you know, I can't go side to side.
Lean in there. No, yeah.
I would say that, you know, I don't know if I'm going to have much more at the end of January. Again, the the timeline for vaccines for the K 12 educated is is February at the earliest and that, you know, I'm not going to. There won't be a plan in place by the end of January. We can have a discussion about it. I don't mind. I'll answer any questions, but you know, without knowing that piece for sure in in kind of figuring out what that's going to look like. You know, and I want to get the at least the union reps involved with it also. Because they'll have a big piece of this. So me, you can have the discussion. I just that's that's the piece that, you know, I I wouldn't feel comfortable asking teachers to come back unless at least that was in place at this point. September, a different story, but we're here now. So I don't mind discussing it. I just don't know how much more I'm going to have by then.
Wait, okay, let me let me see how the rest of the committee feels about it. And I I think this is a topic I'd like to hear back from each individual, if that's okay. I'll start with just who's first on my list here. Angela, I'll start with you.
You're on mute, Angela.
All right. Now I clicked off the screen and then I couldn't unmute myself or didn't know how to do it quickly. I guess to me, it depends on what is going to be on the agenda for the February. I know we're having the second meeting in February because of the budget hearing. So I feel like if it's a hefty agenda load in February, then I'm okay with having the January meeting. I guess I would prefer to just have it in February. To Jeff's point that there's not much else to say. And I feel like, you know, if the community members curious, and I'm sure they all are, I would recommend that Jeff make a mention in one of his weekly communications about this is a potential scenario and this is how I'm feeling about it right now. I don't know if Jeff's comfortable doing that, but I guess I just feel like I don't really have much more to add to our discussion per se. But it's more to me how heavy that first meeting in February is with other topics. Because I do like keeping the meeting short, two hours or less.
With that being said, I do think our agenda in February is pretty tight. We moved we moved the principals from this meeting to that meeting in an effort to with some of the things we had to talk about in this agenda. So but we can also we can also have the principals updates, you know, they they do a great job of providing us reports prior, right? So we can. We can ask that the principals do it just sort of a condensed update in an effort to keep that meeting on track. I'm not against it February meeting and keeping it on track. But at the same time, I think if this item is on there, I don't, you know, based on Jeff's feedback, if we have it in into January, I don't know how much discussion would it be because maybe we wouldn't have as much information, but all right, so Lori, what is your thoughts?
Okay, so I'm torn because I I like Mike's idea. I like the idea that we would be able to completely focus on this. And I think it's an important issue and I too have heard a lot from parents, but I also feel like we don't have any more information and we won't because of the vaccines and that really is a key part of it. So I think my concern would be if we did have it, then would it be more of people just asserting opinions and causing division like I want? I'm thinking, you know, I'm sure Jeff has a plan in his in his head and he wants to roll it out, talking to all of the key players that are going to be involved. So I think that's my concern. So I guess I really don't know. I'm fine either way.
You know, since I've since I've mentioned this in public, I mean, right now it was just been a couple of discussions here and there with the leadership team and it will at least one or two of the union reps. I can, as Angela said, put this out in one of my well, I could do it this week, put it in this week's, you know, reach out to parents, just saying these are some tentative, basically what I laid out here and and let them know there's going to be a January 26 meeting. And, you know, if they want to listen in and and we can take questions if that's going to be the only focus. I mean, I I'm sure you don't want to take questions all night, but I'll I'll answer questions by then. I'll have a few more conversations at least and and at least we can see what people are thinking. I agree with Lori. There's, you know, the vaccine is 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 at least one of the important components here. So however you want to do it, but I I can put something out this week, just tentative plans.
Susan, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I I I tend to think at communication from Jeff would be useful. I'm not sure if we really needed discussion at this point without unless we have a very clear purpose to the discussion. I'd like to know what the outcomes of the discussion, what we're what we're aiming for. From what I can see, Jeff and the and the district leadership team has recently solicited parent input about where they stand on these issues and what their interests are in terms of returning or not returning. So I think that district has been in touch with parents recently and has that information, then they're considering that. So I I'm not sure what the purpose is other than to field questions and Jeff could perhaps put out a call for parents to submit their questions and he could handle them in writing or in a Q and A session kind of thing. But I I think I am, you know, we don't want to be creating a lot of division at this point. I think what's most important is for people to understand and for Jeff's decision making process here to be transparent. And he can do that in a number of ways. Jeff, when you're doing that, one of the questions that I'll just toss in the ring that I don't want you to respond to now, but when you go to put out this communication is does the does Baker's rollout of pool testing affect your decision making in any way?
Thank you. Keith, any thoughts?
Yeah, I I don't think we should really have another meeting at the end of this month, just based on, you know, like Jeff said, everybody's split, you know, based on the the parents' feedback. And, you know, I mean, are we going to be able to make any decisions? I feel like we're going to get feedback that we already know. I I, you know, I hate to use this word. I think it's a pointless thing to do at the end of the month. And I think it would maybe more productive if we had the meeting and maybe do another meeting at the end of February.
We already have two meetings in February right now.
Oh, we do. I'm sorry.
We do right now. So we're not. We're not adding a third.
My bad.
Unless we unless we we really have to. So just I just want to help. I want to circle back to Mike because he sort of opened it up and had it was his sort of topic that he brought. I just I want to circle back, Mike, anything as it relates, you've heard today and and obviously Jeff talking about putting out an official sort of statement like you did today, right? Obviously, folks have an opportunity to listen to the recording today, but I I don't feel appropriate if we don't do something more than that, obviously, at this point. So what is what is your comfort level with with Jeff putting out a statement as it relates to his plan? Would you have after hearing everybody? Do you have any other feedback you'd like to add?
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I think Jeff's answer today was good. I disagree that we wouldn't have more information four days before the rollout of the vaccine, but I was wondering if it would help if we also asked for an update at that point on the actual education of the kids like they're in they're out of school three days a week. We've cut the year by 10 days. I don't expect an answer for this tonight either, but would be worth getting an update on how is it actually going this year? Teaching kids, are they learning what they're supposed to be learning? Are they where they're supposed to be? The feedback I got from parents was that how can that possibly be if there's only two days a week of actual instruction? So if we could add maybe a report on that, whether it's in February or January, doesn't make a difference to me. It's a week apart or 12 days apart or something. But I think it'd be worth it for the community to know that.
So that might be more if Jeff's going to put us. So maybe that's more of the direction of the topic we take for our agenda item for a February or a February meeting, right? Maybe the maybe the direction and the topic is maybe Jeff can can provide us an update from from an educational perspective, which then tailors into how that will play and impact his decisions and and plans moving forward to move back into full time. Is that that sound appropriate?
Jim, I think the if I'm not mistaken, I think the next Ames web test is early February. And I don't know if we'd have the results in time for that, that at least the first February meeting. So I know the principals reported out on Ameswood web results in the fall. So that would might be something you want to, if you want the if you want those kind of those kind of comparisons. But that probably wouldn't be ready till the the second February meeting. I don't know if we'll be ready for the first meeting. Carol, am I speaking out of turn here?
No, that's that would be correct. Yeah, it would be easier. I mean, I think we can address some of the other pieces that Mike spoke about if we would did the earlier February meeting, but I ideally, if we waited to the second meeting in February, that would be helpful just to be more comprehensive.
Okay, so just just to just to move us forward because I didn't want to spend. I want to spend about 20 20 minutes once we kind of go in here, just to move us forward. So what I'm hearing is I didn't hear an overall consensus that we should necessarily have another meeting the end of the month because no one feels that one, there may not be as much information update. Obviously, this would disagree with there. But then secondly, we would need some more short time. We would need some more directive on what the the overall goal and purpose of the meeting would be. Maybe if we give ourselves an additional timeframe, we can figure that out. What I also heard is from a number of school committee members today, and it sounds like from the from the community is that there there is a need and desire for some more communication and information sharing as it relates to this particular topic with the community. So Jeff's going to address that per our discussion tonight. And then the third takeaway I'll take away is I will work with Jeff. We'll add this this idea of this topic to our next agenda and I'll work with Jeff and the rest of the committee throughout the month to an hour down with that goal being what that update would look would look like. Is that comfortable? Everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah. Jimmy, can I just throw this out there? I know at the beginning of the year, we actually had like a like in you know, like Jeff took questions that were already given.
Town hall.
Yeah, town hall type of style. Maybe we could possibly just you know, do that at the end of February. I I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there. I mean, like it's a, you know, that was, I think that was like two hours, but you know, I don't know. We can talk about later, but I just want to throw that out there that that could be a possibility. And we could throw that out there because I think it was on a Thursday in September or something like that.
Yep, yep. And that, you know, there's there's a number of ways to solicit feedback and I would encourage you know, parents to continue to provide feedback. You know, once once Jeff is a lot, once Jeff does provide his update out to the community, anybody has an opportunity to reach out to and email Jeff and the team and and as well as their school committee members, right? So you know, I would encourage folks to provide as much feedback as they can after Jeff's update. We can take that information and maybe that will help address some of what Jeff discusses in February. I don't know that we want to go the route, you know, a town halls is a different different animal. And I'm not sure at that point we're required or we need we need to do that yet. So I don't want to. I don't want to start a conversation around that if we don't need to at this point. But I think I think we have what we need from from a win for it. I'll I'll work with Jeff to get this on the agenda in some form. in some form or fashion. Jeff's going to provide his updates. And we'll, at this point, continue to have our next scheduled meeting in January on the, I'm sorry, February on the ninth.
Can I just say, I like Keith's town hall idea, whether we do it or not, I see some people in the crowd are appreciative of this conversation. So I think the town does want it. So I think, whatever, whenever we do it, the sooner the better because the year's wasting and every day we're not teaching.
Yeah, it definitely, I, I agree. I don't, I don't disagree. It definitely was a major, definitely was a major component of our decision last time. We're not at that point yet where we have, we're not, we're not acting on anything. There is no plan at this time. We don't, we don't have a timeframe. When we get to that point and it's time for us as a committee to understand and solicit all the feedback we need, that's a great tool for us to do that. So I just don't want to get that idea of a town hall out there yet and have folks think it's coming right around the corner, but we're, and we're not really quite there yet because, like, like Jeff mentioned, you know, until we get, just, there's lots of sides of it, right? And there's, there's lots of, to your point, there, there is new information, but there's even more coming, right? So once we have all that in place and we have, you know, something more concrete that we can have a town hall about. I do, I do agree that that was an excellent resource and I think it's something we could potentially leverage again.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, only five months left in the year, so sooner we can own it, the better. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any, any other communications? Okay, moving through, I don't know, one of our reports section is our superintendent evaluation subcommittee update.
Yes, um, so Susan and I met on January 5th to go over the evaluation, both the, the manual as well as the updated document. And we're still waiting on some of the items for final review, some decisions that have to be made. But we are going to take our notebooks and they will be updated. Susan did a great job last year of going through, this is a very thick manual. It, it has standards, it has, you know, just different points in it. And to be able to navigate it, she did a great job of going through and telling you what relates to each of Jeff's goals. And it's just, it's, it's a wonderful, but it's a working document. It's something that has to be, to be worked on. So we're going to be getting that fixed up and we'll have it to you in your hands by hopefully the next February meeting. We're awaiting some decisions. The biggest thing that, that we came to and Susan came up with this, and I, I think it's extremely important, is we talked about revising the timeline. Susan made the point that we're all up for reelection. And it's possible that if we had stuck with the other timeline, there might not have been as many members who had seen Jeff the whole year. There, you know, we have new members coming in. They may not have been watching the same things that we were watching because we knew what his goals were. So we revise the timeline. It is in your packet. The biggest thing is that it would, it's basically going to cut a month off. And it's going to affect how we evaluate Jeff. We did speak to him about that and we asked him if that was going to be okay. And if he wanted to amend any of his goals or not. And so if you want to take a look at that timeline, it's, it's really important that we know what, how you feel about the timeline, if you can think of anything that we haven't thought of that should be added to it. Yeah, I'm just putting my glasses on because I wrote some things down, but I can't see it. So if there's, if you have any questions or any changes, any considerations that we should make now would be the time to mention it because we are going to vote to accept the timeline in the business portion of tonight's meeting. So you might want to take a peek at that if you haven't already. Susan, anything that I missed in my?
No, no, that's it. I mean, the goal is to complete the process before the May elections. And so that timeline aims for that to, to complete that.
And then the policy many, the policy committee is going to be meeting at the end of the month. Something that happened this year is, you know, left mid-year and then Mike came in mid-year, just like I did last year. And we need to come up with a consensus or a policy that says what happens as someone's leaving or as someone's coming in when it comes to the evaluation. Do they give a full evaluation? Do they do rankings or ratings? So that's something that they're going to discuss at the policy subcommittee meeting. And they will hopefully have that policy updated by the end of February, early March.
Yeah, that, that will come to the committee at the February, at a February meeting, hopefully.
Where's the timeline at? And just another comment, this is kind of, it's very similar to timeline we've had to use in past years. So.
You may, you may have to refresh your page for the timeline to show up.
It's under four votes. And yes.
Oh, and it's, and it's there and, okay.
Yeah, it's the.
It wasn't there, Angela. That's why you, you didn't see it. We had to get that. Oh, if you refresh your page, you should see it. And yes, it is, it is basically the same kind of timeline. And it is a short turnaround time between when, so the committee has basically a week to complete the evaluation forms and to submit them back. And Lori and I are going to turn around a report like we did last year in even shorter time, I think, than we did last year. So we, again, will have to ask the committee to be very timely in their completion of the evaluation.
Well, and then at Susan's direction too, because last year, it was, the, the evaluation document is a living document and Susan moved it around so it would be easier to use, but some, some places can get a little tricky. So what she suggested that we do this year, and I thought was a great idea, was give out almost an instruction sheet with screen pictures of where you go and what you do, just to make it, because it's enough to come up with the evaluation and your, and your rankings and how you feel about it and what evidence you have to support that without trying to figure out how to navigate a document.
Yeah, the evaluation form, if you recall, is weirdly organized in that they have the summit of ratings on the first two pages. But, but you don't start there when you go to do the evaluation. You start on page three. You know, there are just, there's some, and that's not our design. We wouldn't have designed it like that, but that's the state's design. So we wanted to provide a little support for people in case that's confusing. Anybody have any concerns or questions or things we didn't think about in that timeline, Angela?
Sorry, I'm so computer illiterate. Mine, I did, I'm not sure how to refresh. I did log out. It's, it's still showing locked my timeline. I see it there. How, how do I refresh it so I can view it?
Up in your, up in the search bar at the, or where you write, where you type the URL at the very top, there's a little circular arrow to the right of that little URL space.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that should do it.
So while Angela is, is, is looking at that, I do have one, one commenter and one issue we need to make sure we cover. And this sort of ties into that item A that we have on our agenda, which is the, the sensitivity around the ti- it's extremely sensitive change, right? And I appreciate you guys bringing this forward, right? Because it is directly tied, the superintendent evaluation is directly tied to Jeff's contract and Jeff's compensation, right? So it's not like, it's an extremely important piece that we do and we want to make sure, which is why I think it's, I, I appreciate that you guys are going to address it at policy subcommittee, because I think it is important to, to address what our, what our, at least our policy as a committee will be moving forward as it relates to new members coming in and out. And, you know, there's, there's many years that that doesn't happen, right? But we do need to be prepared for it. So it's a couple, so the first comment I'll make is, one, we probably should, once you have an idea of what we think as a committee, we'd want to propose for a policy. I do think it's something that we should make sure Russ is part of. Because I do, you know, it's not just talking about Jeff, right? We're talking implemented policy for superintendents in the future, right? And, you know, it's, so I think, I want to make sure legal shares their feedback and/or weight as it relates to kind of what we do from a policy perspective. So that would just be my one, my one comment. And then, and then secondly, I want to make sure, because it is directly tied to Jeff's contract, I don't want to move this forward, right, unless for a vote, unless, and Jeff, and thanks to the subcommittee, I've been able to communicate with Jeff. But I just want to confirm with Jeff that he approves of the timeframe, because we are providing him a shorter timeframe to complete and provide us the updates as it relates to his, his goals. So I do want to let Jeff make a comment if he wants and/or I do want to have him confirm that he's okay with the timeline change.
I'm, I'm fine with it. You know, we had a meeting last week and I'm comfortable with everything that happened there. So I'm fine with the timeline.
Okay, all right, cool. So we will be, that will be voted on as part of our, in our business items section. Any other updates, Susan, or Lori, or any other questions?
Yeah, we just wanted to sort of set the stage for this part of the evaluation cycle because January is the time when the superintendent gives a mid-cycle report on progress on his goals. So we just wanted to take this opportunity to kind of cue people up to revisiting what this mid-cycle report is for and what it's about. Particularly for Mike who's new to the committee, but also in the interest of helping all of us think about how to do this part of the process better all the time each year. So the mid-course, aside from it being a report out time, it's also a time for the superintendent to get to consider whether there need to be any mid-course adjustments because stuff happens, right? The year unfolds, personal circumstances arise, the landscape shifts, and certainly we can see all of that happening this year with this pandemic. So it's a time for Jeff to indicate whether he thinks anything needs to shift or any portion of his goals might need to be pushed out to next year or revised in some way. And for us to remember that these goals that he set out in the fall are meant to be flexible. They're meant to, we, we want the superintendent to have like a high reach and have bold goals, but not to be punished for not reaching bold goals. I mean, our goal is to help them stretch and reach what's meaningful and important. And we need to bear in mind always that those goals may shift according to the landscape unfolding as the year progresses. So we just need to bear that in mind as we listen to Jeff's report today. And then probably most important is that the mid, and we don't, we have not traditionally done this part well, I don't think. I think we've taken the mid-year report out as sort of a passive event from the school committee's role. But actually, a mid-year report out should be an interactive piece. The school committee should ask clarifying questions, should pose scenarios or considerations that will help stimulate the superintendent's thinking about an issue or to, for him to have an opportunity to clarify things. And so there, there should be some questions, some give and take. And the super, and the school committee has the opportunity to give formative feedback, constructive feedback about how he's doing so far. Because ultimately, a really important piece here is that come the end of cycle review, an evaluation in May, Jeff should not be surprised by anything he hears on that May evaluation because he's been hearing from us at every single meeting. He should almost be able to predict where each school committee member is going to fall on that evaluation or what comments they're going to make because he's been hearing from us all along. There shouldn't be any surprises come May. So this is an opportunity to be interactive in that regard and to let him know how you're feeling about his work at this point. And if you have any questions or suggestions at this point as he moves forward. Does anybody have any questions about this, this midterm, this mid-cycle check-in as part of the cycle of the evaluation? All right. We're done.
Excellent. Thank you. And again, good job. Thank you, Susan, Lori, for that hard work. Okay, so that leads us into our next item in our report section, which is Mr. Zhang's mid-year goals review.
Okay, thank you. I know you have a copy of that and on the drive, so I'm just going to go through my goal. I'll go through the action steps, what I've done so far and take any questions you have. So goal one, by May 18th, 2021, the superintendent and administrative leadership team will be prepared to bring forward to staff a common understanding of equity as it relates to all students, defining what equity looks like in our school district and addressing areas in which we have, which we have determined through data collected from the state and within the district where there are areas in need of improvement. Now, we've all established that this will be a two-year goal because there are some student aspects of this and faculty aspects that we want to address next year. So action step one, the superintendent will engage a consultant with expertise in the sub, on the subject of equity to guide him in leading discussions, book studies and exercises to better understand the meaning of equity in all aspects of education. We've done that. We're a little bit behind. We were hoping to get that done in November, but obviously we couldn't get that done. We, we did hire some from Teachers 21 to, to lead us. We have a, a, a final planning meeting on January 21st before we, we kick off the work with the leadership team. We are beginning our book study Thursday, this Thursday. We've, we already have an assignment, so we will be ready to go on Thursday. I'll be ready to go at least. So we're well on our way. Again, we're a little bit behind, but we think we should be able to make some, make some progress. The other thing that happened with this goal is we were able to extend it through the summer. So, so, so now it was just going to be a goal for the first year and then pick up again in September. But now that we've extended it through the summer, we think we can do some catch-up, plus maybe get ahead. Summer's not, well, this summer hopefully won't be as busy as last summer. So I think we're in good shape with that. It keeps evolving, but we're, we're on track with it. The second action step, the student, the superintendent will direct all administrators to share in the goal as part of the annual evaluation. They've done that. They have it as their goal and will be evaluated on it. And again, we'll see where our work goes with the consultant. The superintendent will oversee and support principals in the planning and implementation of a school-wide activity involving staff and students that demonstrates at least one aspect of equity and that will become the foundation for future work in this area. That, that one right there, we kept it on here. We talked about it the other day. We kept it on here. Most likely that work will be done with the staff and the students next year. But what will, that, again, yeah, that, that'll probably be done on next year. And number four, the administrative leadership team will participate in at least three professional development activities that will strengthen their shared understanding of equity. That, that, that will get done. We're well on our way to getting that done, even though we, we were a little behind with the consultant. As, as I said, we're starting next week with the first meeting on the book study. And number five, the superintendent will engage, engage administration, administrators in the analysis of data from the state and determining key areas in need of improvement as it relates to equitable access to education in all of our schools, all of our students. Again, we're going to, once we get to doing the work with the consultant, they have access to our data and will provide more access to that. And so we expect to do, to, to engage with them in that data analysis as part of this work. And that should, that most likely will get done this year also. It will get done. It's one of the first things we're going to do. Number six, the superintendent will provide a final report of work done by the administrative leadership team in the areas of equity that include action steps related to the staff and parent involvement for the subsequent year. We should have that done, I, I would think at the very, at the very, I think the worst case scenario there, now that we've added, our summer work onto that, that it may be extended into the summer. We want to make sure. that it may be extended into the summer. We want to make sure that's, that's, we do a thorough job with that. That's really, that's going to be an important piece of next year. So we don't want to shortchange that piece of it. And then number seven, the superintendent will work with the director of finance and operations and the, and director of curriculum, who's now the assistant superintendent of curriculum of, she's, she's the assistant superintendent of teaching and learning. That's what it is. Not to make that correction, the budget year, two equity goal activities. We've already done that and in some ways it's good that we got pushed back a little. So now that we're right in the middle of budget season, we've got that done. Bob says we have plenty of money for this, so don't worry. Any questions on goal one before? I always like that look on Bob's face when I say we have plenty of money. Anything else on get goal one? Do you have any questions about it? Okay, good. Now, goal two. By May 18, 2021, a superintendent will have established and met with no more than a 12-member advisory board representing members of each of the three schools. The purpose of the board will be to provide the superintendent with ongoing support in the form of information, feedback, ideas and perspectives on areas related to the school and district, district improvement and changes within the community. These areas specifically include COVID-19 enrollment and physical space available in the schools, growth in the community and issues and concerns related to the student equity. These were just relevant issues. These are things that we've been talking about. In fact, I think in February, we'll, I'll be reporting out on on enrollment again. So I know it's a kind of an idea. Not a lot of surprises there, but so these are, these are these, these kinds of topics that we really thought that the community could be involved with. Action steps. Number one, the superintendent will establish an advisory board to include parents, staff, administrators, community members, a student representative and a school committee member by November 20th. That date's come and gone and we don't have the committee together, but we are sending out, we are in the process of sending out invitations. We don't have them all out yet. We are a little bit behind in that. The superintendent will set a schedule for meetings to occur no less than three times between November and June. The superintendent will maintain an agenda and minutes for the meetings. The November meeting, obviously what happened in the June meeting, we're planning now for mid-February, mid-March, mid-April. And we think we, we should be able to get in a, something, the end of the year gets busy. If we, we already kind of calculated if we are to return in sometime and that, that kind of warm spring area. That becomes a busy time of year, not only with that, but also with the, the, the springtime celebrations that go on, our traditional celebrations. So we'll hope for one in May and June, like one in those two months. But we'll get at least three. And, and this, this board, of course, is something that we hope to keep. You know, this is just the start of it and the initial work, but it's, it's something we hope to, we, we hope to continue. The, uh, number two, number three, the superintendent will indicate to the school committee any actions taken as a result. Other recommendations of the advisory board will certainly do that. And I think that's it for that goal. Again, that was a little bit behind, but I see this goal as one of this year of forming, getting a committee together, figuring out, setting some agendas, you know, talking about some, some, some of our big relevant topics. And obviously COVID will be one and hopefully get some input from them on this return to school and you know, again, it's just, it'll just be more input from the community.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can you, do you know what size advisory board are you aiming for? And how are you identifying those people if there are community people who would like to, to participate on that board? Should they contact you? What's the process?
Well, we have three parents from a board that we already meet with Carol and I meet on Tuesday and Monday mornings. So we've asked those three, they're from another committee we had and they've, they've been very, very helpful. We've asked the principals if they could offer somebody from the community that they've worked with. They, if they have someone, you know, some of them have had students, some still have students. We asked Diane for a, a student that they think might be willing to do that. And we asked the school committee member, we asked Lori if she would, if she would be part of it. So again, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not so caught up in the, the number as I am. You know, I want to get a, get a good balance of people. And so as they start working together, as we start working together as a group, I'm hoping this is a year we can sort of balance it out and see some, you know, some, some of them might get on the board and, and think, you know, this isn't, isn't a commitment I want to make or they might want to steer it in another, in another direction. So I'm, I'm hoping that though we'll have agendas when we go to the meetings. I really want to make sure that they, they, they know that we're going to kind of take what they say seriously.
So it sounds like if, if someone in the community is interested or someone in the parent community is interested in participating, they should contact their school principal.
Well, I think we put something out in our, in a couple of my, my weekly memos, but you know, just as you're saying, it's probably a good idea to put it out again. They can contact the principals, but they could contact me directly. And by that I mean Christie.
Okay. And are you including anybody other than people directly involved in the schools, any community members who may not have students in the school?
We have one right now who had students in the school who, who one of the principals thought might be, who's a business owner in the community. And so we're just waiting back from, from that person. No, ultimately that's, I'd like to find, I might reach out to some of the other business owners to see if they would, if they'd be willing to be on the board. And I was going to ask, I know, you know, like Keith, for example, works for a lot of people in the community. So I was going to talk to him about that at some point and I know Lori does too. So I, I would like to have somebody who doesn't have any kids and didn't have kids in the community. I mean, in the schools who has a completely different perspective on it, who comes in it really just as a business owner. Because even though they don't have kids, they, they, they fund the budget. And that's always a big part of, of what we do. And I, I'd like to find out from them if they think their money's being well-spent. You know, my guess is yes, but they have a different perspective than we do about where money should go and where it shouldn't go. So I would like to get somebody on there. I don't know where to turn with that. So that's why I know Keith teaches a lot of kids and knows the parents. So he's the first one that came up in my, in my head. And I know Lori does a lot of things in the community. So I'll be reaching out to them for that.
I believe we have a meeting.
We have a meeting set up anyway, Keith and I, so we can talk about that too.
Sure.
That, yeah, that would, that'd actually be a good tie-in.
Yeah, it all seems to tie it together. So.
Yeah. I think that's it for goal two, correct? Yeah. Any other questions? I'm excited about this goal actually. So not that I'm not excited about all my goals, but this one in particular. Goal number three, during the 2020, 2021 school year, the superintendent will continue to meet with his mentor for the purpose of strengthening his leadership skills and target areas as noted in his 2020 evaluation. Specifically presentation, both verbal and written communications and agenda setting specifically. Ensuring that the meeting discussion and topics addressed by the superintendent remain on task and focused and linked to the agenda. I'll just, I'm, these action steps, I'm just going to sort of talk about them just as one because we've been working. My meetings with, I, I put monthly just to stay on the safe side of this goal, but really they turn out to be almost weekly with my mentor. And especially this year, most of our discussions have been centered around COVID-19 and starting to have some discussions about, you know, return to school, transition back. Again, hopefully this year, but like, you know, how to approach that. I'm really fortunate in that my mentor is the executive director at Mars. So she has access to a lot of other regional districts and has a lot of input as to what other districts are doing, what other superintendents are doing in this area. And you know, we all have the same, same sort of issues with this, this, you know, COVID isn't treating anybody any differently. So unfortunately. So that's been my meetings. I'll have, let me just go through something here. A goal number four by May, action step number four, by May 2021, report on how presentation and communication skills have improved this year and whether these communication goals have been met or how they will continue into next year. I'll certainly have a report, but that will be, that'll be one of the things where you'll have to decide. You know, one of the things I've been trying to do is keep my reports a little more concise and not just for the, not just for the sake of time, but just to sort of be more direct and, and my reports to you. Series of self-reflections related, number five, series of self-reflections reflect, related to the school committee presentations provided by the superintendent to his mentor, identifying strengths and areas in need of improvement over time. So I'll do those self-reflections too. You know, it really is an area I think is important for superintendent and I certainly want to improve on it. So I think I should be able to meet that goal. I think that's a goal that is certainly something that's, it probably won't be an official goal every year, but I think it's certainly something that a superintendent should work on every year. Those, so I don't know if there's any questions on goal number two, three?
Just one, that number four, it says by May 2021, report on, report out. And can you do that by April, Jeff?
Yeah, no problem. Like I said, we, I have a lot of meetings. Yeah, I, I shouldn't have a problem with it. I mean, I can, I can even give you some projections on what I'm doing and I shouldn't have any problem with it.
Okay, thank you.
And now the fire. Yeah, just, just so you know, you don't have to say no problem to every single thing, you know, to create, it's a, it's a, it's a crazy year. We'd be okay if you said, let me think about that and come back to us and let you know if that's going to be a challenge to me, to meet that timeframe. I don't want, I don't want you to feel like you have to, you know. No problem can get you in trouble sometimes.
Yeah, I know. These things are going to be a hell of a job for me to get to. I want you to know.
But so just, you know, I just, you know, I don't want to, I want to make sure you, you know that, you know, any of these things you, if you want to address and reconsider and think about, obviously as a time, as from a timeframe perspective, obviously, you know, let us know from that perspective.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And Jeff, I'm assuming that this communication goal includes things like these parent communications that we were talking about earlier around, you know, when we come back to all-in schooling again at, at school and answering questions from parents and creating both written and verbal communications for them around this topic.
This goal number three, Susan, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely has. Like, you know, this, this weekly thing that we, that, you know, we started out just as, it was just going to be a COVID, you know, during COVID to get it, it's once a week out to, to.
Right, that's right.
But it'll certainly be something that will continue on, you know, as long as I'm here. I, I think it, I think getting stuff out once a week is, is a good idea.
Thank you. Anybody else want to get in there and give Jeff any feedback or clarify direction?
I do, actually. Thank you, Susan. I just want to say, Jeff, on the communication, those weekly updates that you do do, they are appreciated by everyone, I think. And it's actually come to the point where we're disappointed when the sections from each of the people who contribute are shorter than they normally are. So keep them coming, keep them longer if you want.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Cool. Any other, any other comments, questions?
Okay.
My only other question was the advisory board. You said you'd invited some people. So so far you're amassing a group. The people you've invited thus far have said yes, most of them?
Yes. Lori, you said yes, right? Okay. I didn't know about Lori. So yeah.
As a witness.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, moving on. Item number three under reports is Carol.
Sure. My, my report tonight is a follow-up from a report I had done in December to the school committee regarding student learning time. At that time, we didn't have specific guidance from the state. They were, had just, were going into session and issued a mandatory emergency regulations to increase student learning, live student learning time, whether it was synchronous like we're doing now or face-to-face. Largely, the commissioner expressed for the concern, well-being of students' mental health. This was the result of that deep concern that we wanted to be able to see children every day and engage in learning with them. So they set requirements for 35, a minimum of 35 hours across two weeks, two, two learning weeks total for a particular district for live learning time. And 40 hours if you were in a, if you were in a remote learning model. So at the time, we, the state asked us to submit numbers in late October. And then I think we were really, they hadn't given us the, the minimum number of hours that we should be doing these live, this live times. So we calculated that we were doing about 31 hours across the, the two elementary schools and the middle high school of this live time. So when the state came out with a 35 hours of minimum to do this work, we went back to the table again to see where we could increase our time with students. So since that time, and we have to do this by January 19th, so it was a very short window of time for us to take a look at, at what we had in place. I, I think that what's important to note too is that since that October, the end of October time, we were already increasing live learning time. That's about the time we started talking about live streaming in the classrooms. Teachers were getting more technology devices in their classrooms to be able to, to do this so that if this student was home, they were still able to connect with them and face-to-face through synchronous learning time in ways that they hadn't maybe efficiently and effectively been able to do prior to that time. I think definitely teachers have come a long way from the spring in being able to do this when they were, many of them were just getting up and really up and running and familiar with how to use technology to do this kind of work. So, so just to give you where we're at right now and what we'll be launching and, and ready to go for January 19th. In many ways, we are ready already. So we had, we will currently have an average of 34 hours in an elementary school. And that's in the hybrid model across two weeks. And then we have 40 hours if we go into a remote model similar to what we've, we've been doing with Boylston this week. So 40 hours across two weeks of a remote learning, live remote learning time. At Tohato Middle School and High School, we were doing well. We had, we had already 30, I believe it's 36. Check that. In the middle school, 42 hours in the high school. We've been able to increase that time so that we have 46 live face-to-face to face time with the students in the hybrid model. We've been able to meet the 40 hours in the remote model for an average across the districts now of 40 hours. So we've increased that time from 30, 32 hours, I'm sorry, 31 hours to 40 hours across two weeks. I realize that's a lot of numbers throwing that at you. It involved a lot of looking at the schedules in both the middle, the elementary, middle and high school hybrid models. hybrid models and saying, how can we increase live learning time with students so that it's quality time with them? You know, it's one thing to increase it. It's another to do it in a way that, that gives quality learning for those students. The, the other piece to this that we had to think about as well, and you'll see that in my report is the Department of Ed has also mandated that we have to do a live check-in with every student every day. So whether or not you're at home or you're, or you're, just as you would do there, we need to take attendance every day and not just do that on a, what, what the teachers were doing prior to this, on to Google Forms. They have to see the children's faces every day and check in with them. So it was a lot to change in a short period of time, but we feel like we're in good shape. The state is going to be giving us another survey at the end of January, beginning of February, which we'll complete. And then you'll be able to see the increase in numbers. They did make it public. I provided the link to that in the newsletter and into, in my report. It's interesting. I've gone on since then this week and it's missing from the, from the link that I gave, which I was puzzled about. I don't know. They, I don't know if they took it down after this, but I did send that along to you. So you could see pretty much the same numbers I'm giving you. So I did wondered if you had any questions about that or concerns that you wanted to ask.
I have a question, Carol. I'm curious how now you required to keep, are the teachers required to keep a log on how many hours they do with each cohort? Or how are they, do they have to manage something extra? I'm just curious how that, that information is logged and if you, if the state requires weekly updates or?
Sure. So Laurie, in the elementary schools, it's pretty easy to be able to, to manage these numbers because all of the grade levels are doing the exact same thing. So it's not like one teacher's doing a certain number of hours and another teacher in that grade level or in the school is doing something different. They're all being required in the elementary school, obviously, to do the same number of hours. And they're all engaged in that. It has to be because of the way the schedule is set up during, for each week with the students. And I can talk about that in just a moment. At the middle and high school, Diane went back with a team of teachers to look at those hours. And, and she pretty much, I think, said to them, here's what we need to do. What are we doing right now? How do we need to find ways to increase this? So the teachers are on board with that. As I said, many of them have already been adding a lot, live streaming components to their, to their courses already. We had some questions about Wednesdays and how we could increase a few hours there. I think they've had four hours now. And some of them were teaching straight through on Wednesdays. So initially it wasn't a concern around the middle high school, but I think they found a way to kind of, what, what they did more there was ensure there was a balance across the grade levels and consistent time. How do we know that they're doing this? Well, I think that, you know, part of that is professional trust in the teachers, but more than that too, we also collect their lesson plans. That's one, that's a second way weekly. So we're able to see where they're doing their live lessons with the students. In addition to that, the principals are, are getting on. They're, they're setting up observations with the teachers and, and so they're able to tell that way. They can do check-ins to ensure that their teachers are on with their students. And certainly at those ages, the students themselves are able to articulate whether they're on with their teachers or not. I think that's been, that's been certainly our, our greatest kind of dipstick and how often they're on.
My concern was more with just if the teachers had more work. I've got my, I have two, a middle schooler and a high school and they're on all the time. And so I credit to those teachers. It's not easy.
It is not easy to sustain attention, you know, for that length of time. I think that's probably, I hate to say easier, that's a relative term. You know, in the, in the upper grades, in the early grades, I think that was a challenge for the elementary teachers, but they get creative with the way they're going to do that. And so I have to really give them all the credit for thinking deeply about how they wanted to, to get their students on and use that time. You know, I, I will also add in there, you know, we've had a couple of questions from parents about the bridge program in the elementary. And so we are kind of looking at ways that we can get some of the tutors that we're hiring to spend time online with those students in a live situation when they're not, when they're not on with the regular teachers who are scheduled to meet with them on those opposite days rather than just doing asynchronous learning. So, so we've, we've, I think, improved in a lot of areas with all of this.
Thank you.
Can you, I'm sorry if I didn't hear you correctly. Did you say you're currently at 40 hours of live instruction right now?
So an average of 40 hours, this is across two weeks, Mike, this is an average of, so the state picked four grade levels. They picked first grade, fourth grade, seventh grade and 10th grade for us to look at. But what we really have done, so we took those four grades to use for our average, but actually in the elementary school, it's all the same. Every grade has the same number of hours, but we averaged those hours together between them, all four of those grades and, which is what they took the first time around, we're able to come up with 40 hours. So it's not, I, I don't know if I'm making, so it's, it would really be 34 hours in each grade level across two weeks.
And that's live instruction. So in our cohort model, it's on the two days that they're in school?
And the two days now that they're out of school. So there'll be some time built in there too for live with their teacher. Yes.
All right.
So by live, it's not only that kind of, that face-to-face, literally when the students come in and they're physically in front of the teacher, but the time when they're, they're remote, where they've been doing, I think asynchronous learning, they haven't been on with the teacher. Now they'll actually be on a couple of times a day on that. Those are like, if your, if your child is a Monday, Tuesday student where they come in, Thursdays and Fridays, they'll be on three times a day for a half hour each with those teachers. And they've added additional time on Wednesdays as well for specialists to work with students in, in whole group activities, learning activities. Teachers will be on doing an instruction for an hour of that time and then an additional hour as well. So, so the students, and we'll see their teachers. It's been, it's been interesting because when, when we think about this, that the remote learning model, which we've been trying to stay away from, so we have the children in the building, something that we were talking about earlier, that physical connection with the teachers is so important. The remote model almost lends itself to more face-to-face, that live face-to-face time with the teachers. It's a, it's a kind of an odd thing. We've been, I think the superintendents have been mentioning to the commissioner, you know, it's almost like pushing them back into a, to a remote models where the kids see their teachers more. Granted, it's not physically connecting with them, but they actually were seeing them more.
No, I'm looking forward to that, you know, hearing how that helps make those connections and get better like that. I mean, I came into this expecting remote learning wasn't going to be successful like that. But I mean, from all the accounts that I'm hearing, it seems like it is pretty successful and it's going to be more successful. Cause I mean, we're what, like a roughly a third through the school year, which is usually 36 weeks or so, give or take. And I mean, at, at some grade levels, we haven't even had three weeks of actual instruction yet. So it's good to hear this is coming. And also the remote learning being as successful it is, tonight's not the time to discuss it, but I think we should seriously look at that in the future as a more permanent model that we can consider. Might help with our budget issues and everything else. So that's some good to hear that it's that successful.
Thank you.
Any other questions around this? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, Mr. Connery.
Good evening. I have a few agenda items on here. I'll run through them in order. There is one item that's not on the agenda. It was deferred from last need, last month's meeting. The region financial statement audit was completed. I don't typically go through that. That's kind of government accounting standards for our district. We typically look at what we're spending versus budget and there's information on there that I think is, one thing I'd point out is that with the elementary schools now part of the region, the liability for other post-employment benefits, healthcare has jumped. And that's something that we'll have to think about in future years for the budget. That's not something we have the capacity to worry about right now with really just trying to manage through the COVID crisis and be able to fund what we need to, what we need to run our schools. So, but that will come up in the future. It'd be something we need to pay attention to. So that's really all I was going to comment on, on the financial statement audit. The next item is the budget status report. This is just a year-to-date update on our budgets. So I, you know, you, you may, this is something we report quarterly. When you look at it, it might look like we have some, some money available. I'd remind you that, you know, what we do is, you know, we report the full year budget, show our current spending. And then the encumbrances are for known items that we have set aside money for. For example, we know we're going to incur utilities bills and electricity bills. So we set up a P O for 12 months of that. There's plenty of things that we can't do that for, like repairs and maintenance that we don't know yet that we need. Charter school tuitions and school choice tuitions, just the mechanism for the way that they're billed to us through the state. We can't encumber those. One other thing on the budget too, that I should mention is, you know, I just recently talked to Carol about the, you know, things we wanted to do to supplement the remote learning. So those costs aren't built into our payroll encumbrances yet. So, so some of those costs for salaries will increase the payroll encumbrances and reduce what we have available. All that said, I'd say that, you know, we anticipate that we'll, we'll be okay getting through this year overall. You know, there'll be some, there's certain uncertainties that are still left. But I think the, the bigger concern is being able to is to be able to fund next year with the towns. And I'll talk about next year's budget after that. Related to the budget, we'll talk about this in upcoming meetings. We don't have a lot of details yet, but we did hear that there's going to be another round of CARES Act coronavirus relief from the federal government. And the estimates are that it will be about 3.7 to 3.8 times our initial ESER grant. And I don't remember exactly what that acronym means, but it's part of the CARES funding. So to us, that was about approximately 24,000 times 3.8. You can just say it's about $90,000. That'll help and to the extent we can, you know, the intent this time is the first grant, we used a lot of the funding for things we needed to get the school open, PPE, disinfecting, cleaning, some for instructional support. The intent of the next grant is really to use all of it for instructional support. At least that's what Carol and I talked about. And we feel like a lot of the PPE that we needed to get, we, we were in good shape on and we have the disinfecting equipment we need and we'll try to absorb that within our operating budget if we need to. You didn't get our own camera, Susan? Special guest. So again, the budget, that's the budget update. I think, you know, we are in okay shape. There's, there are some variables. One of the things, one of the big things I don't know yet is, you know, we talk about students going remote. You know, if anybody's kind of dropped off our radar and enrolled in a charter school, I'm not going to, we're not necessarily going to see those revised numbers until right around this time of year. That affects both this year's budget and next year's budget. So, you know, if they stay in remote through our program, it's less expensive and we do retain them in the district. It is expensive to lose people from this district. We pay for tuitions and we get a double hit of getting less revenue from the state. So it's important for us to retain our students. So if there's no questions on the budget, I'll go on to the next item.
Bob, I have just one question. The, the reading that I'm doing about pool testing that Baker is wanting to roll out in schools for checking students for COVID and batches. What I, I read was that schools, at some point, it sounded like would be expected to pay for that testing themselves, districts. And Karen's nodding. And I'm wondering if we are reserving funds for that kind of thing or how are we thinking about that in terms of budget?
I haven't heard what the test costs are. But I do think that if it's pooled testing, I think, I don't know if that's the, I don't know why they called it that. Isn't it just a sampling of students?
No, it's, it's batching them basically, like taking a batch of students and submitting their, their swabs all in one test.
Oh, right, right. Okay, I get you. Yeah. I don't think that that's going to be that expensive, to be honest. I mean, we, if we're, if we're anticipating getting 90,000 in funding, I don't, I don't think that'd put a huge dent. And I don't know what the frequency would be. And I want it to be available, but if we talk about between now and the end of the year, there's going to be some point where people start to get vaccinated too. So, so the expenses between now and June, I don't think will be that significant, but I can certainly do some research. I have, there's a listserv of school business administrators to see if anybody's been doing it and find out what they're paying.
There are, I think, a few larger districts, I think, are starting it, I think. Did I read that right? Anybody know? That would be good to hear more about that. Cause I have no idea what that would, would cost either.
You're correct, Susan. Our nursing staff has been, is looking into it and I think some of them at least attended a webinar today on, is because this issue came up before. So our nurses are researching it and so we should have some more information on that shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, I'll move on to the next one, which is, this is just brief, our annual excess and deficiency certification. Just as a reminder, this is our, you know, a regional school districts equivalent of free cash that a town has. The Mass Department of Revenue is still, I spoke, well, should say corresponded with somebody there today. They are still reviewing our submission, hoping to get an update soon. And anticipate that there, there's not going to be a significant change in, in what our excess and deficiency balance is. So I'll, I'll report that at the next meeting, assuming it's approved then. The last item is a the town of Berlin approved a facilities condition assessment of the school building, which is now over 20 years old. And the idea is to give us a roadmap of what the needs of the building are, what the recommended capital improvements will be, maybe to get some guidance too. We're hoping on, you know, are, are some things worth, you know, kind of doing short-term repairs to versus longer-term investments. And we, we received a tremendous response. Nine firms submitted bids, about 30 plus contacted me. This is very unlike most procurements that we do. So I had, the review team was our facilities manager, Steve Positary, principal John Campbell from Berlin and, and I asked a, my, my former mentor is retired school business administrator to assist with the evaluation. I was stretched very thin. And he had a lot of experience with these types of procurements. And so he was the third evaluator. I developed the, the document and the rating criteria. They went through their evaluation process and identified three firms. And just so I say their names right. They were Drummy Roseanne Anderson, Inc., Gorman Richardson Lewis Architects and Habib and Associates Architects. Of the three, Habib had the highest rating by a small margin. I shared a rating matrix on the school committee's Google Drive. And Gorman Richardson and Drummy Roseanne Anderson were actually tied for second. Under this type of, actually, let me just keep going through this. So I then conducted reference checks for each of the three finalists, received excellent references for all three. All positive, not one negative comment. And so my recommendation based on their receiving the highest rating. My recommendation, based on their receiving the highest rating is that we move forward with. Habib and Associates is a selected firm for this project. They've worked on many, many school projects of a similar nature throughout the state. And they're a known firm in this, for this type of work. This type of procurement allows us to pick the most qualified firm based on our evaluations, which I view them as. And the team viewed them as. It's different than other procurements where you just go based on lowest price. So. If, if you approve my recommendation and the group's recommendation during the business item portion of this meeting. The next step would be for me to negotiate a fee with the selected firm up to the approved project cap. We had set a budget of 40,000 for this. My intent would be to ask them for a list of pricing. Or ask, potentially verify it with the, with the, with the school districts that they provide me. But ask for pricing on some similar projects. And arrive at the price that way, but it won't be more than 40,000. Think, and all the firms are aware of this cap. It was posted in the advertisement. If for some reason they can't meet it, I'd move on to the second firm. And I'd recommend Gorman Richardson Lewis as the second firm. I also request the school committee approve my. First, second and third choice, so that if I do need to move on from the, from the first one for. Pricing reasons that you give me that flexibility and I don't need to bring it back to the school committee. I'd just like to finally say that I wanted to publicly thank all of the applicants. For their interest in this project, particularly the three finalists. It was a very impressive set of credentials. Received 100-page documents with all their projects and qualifications. Saw sample reports from each vendor and I'm confident that we're going to have. Any of these three vendors could, but particularly the one that we select will, will provide us a good roadmap for what we need. Going forward with the Berlin Memorial Building.
Bob, quick, quick question. It might be a procedural response that I get from you. You know, we've got three. Three firms that you have here narrowed down, right? Your top three. Yeah. Why are we not considering cost as a determining, why are we? You know, I just can't help it and it might be something different, right? But why are we not taking the three firms and saying that we've narrowed it down to a three, like a typical? Bid, you know, process would work and asking then for pricing proposals from all three. I mean. If they're that, if they're that close, do we want to at least consider? If there's an opportunity to save money, I, I understand one was the sort of leader in the house, but when you look at some, you know, how close it is.
Yeah. So we're not legally permitted to do that under the R F Q method of procurement. And. You know, there's a, there's other methods. One's a request for proposal. One's a bid. Now, if we went out to bid, we could end up using a firm that's not going to give us a lot of information. And when I, the reason we, we chose the R F Q is. The underlying dollars. Related to the building in total dwarf the cost of the fee we're going to pay. To a firm. So we, you know, we could be talking about spending $10 million over the next 15 years. And it's a similar process for, you know, when we built Tohonto, you picked the most qualified design firm. But legally under the R F Q, you can't consider price. You can set your price in the proposal. Which I said after talking to some other school districts. And then after you set the price, you, after you said, well, I didn't set the price at the cap. And then I, after you select the most qualified candidate, you then negotiate price. So. So that's the, the rule. I don't make the, if it was not a public entity, I do what you suggested. But I'm not, we're not permitted to do that by procurement law, public procurement law.
And, but we, we did have an opportunity to choose if it was going to be a bid process versus an R F Q, right?
Yeah, and the bid process, we would strictly go based on the lowest bid price. There are plenty of problems you can have with that. You can get unqualified or barely qualified candidates. And. You know, if I was. You know, maybe paying for something routine and commodity-like, I might, but I think for design services like this. The R F Q is, gives you the flexibility to pick the company that thinks is going to do the best job. I do think I'll, I don't think the price for these three companies, they're, they're all three large companies. I don't think it would end up being that much different. I also. Will get a sense of whether I think the price is fair and I do have the flexibility, if I don't, to, to, to move to the second company.
Okay. I, I was just wondering why you weren't, why it wasn't part of the decision criteria.
Yeah, it normally is.
Bob, did you say we're the three companies are from where they're located?
You know what? I knew that before. Mike, I, I, off the top of my head, I think that. You know, I don't want to guess. I know at least two of them were from Massachusetts. Out of the nine, there was a couple that were national that didn't make the final three. I can send that in a, I can shoot you an email afterwards if you're interested.
Yeah, I was just wondering if any of them were local and if we should consider local because of travel restrictions with COVID and all that.
I know they have teams that are, I know they have teams that are local. But I'll, I will check on that.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks, Bob. Was that the last item, Bob?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving through the agenda, item number five is policy subcommittee.
Well, we, we have not met, but our meeting, as Laurie said earlier, January 21st. We have a few items on the agenda there, so you should be hearing from us at the, at a February meeting for some policies to respond to.
Okay. We will be appointing a new member to the policy subcommittee tonight, so that's exciting. Okay, our number six is school committee goals updates. Why don't we start with Mr. Lewis tonight?
Oh, exciting. Start with me. I am meeting with Jeff. This Thursday and we're going to move forward with that. And then I, you know, I've also contacted other. People that we can. Discuss in that meeting. With Jeff. So that's all I got to update, but I will have hopefully a lot more to update next meeting.
Yeah, I will say that. One of the challenges that Keith and I have had during our discussions with folks in the community. As it relates to playing a role from a school committee perspective and community engagement, tends to always be the same people. So many of the folks who.
Very good point there.
Already has on his. As, as on his committees, on his engage, community engagement committee, are the folks, are the only folks who would agree to do. As part of our discussion, so.
Handful of people. You're right. You're right.
So I think it's important to figure out as part of Keith's, and, and if I can, I hope, I hope to be part of that discussion, but. As part of, you know, is to, to, to figure out ways to. Draw in other, to Susan's point, draw in some other folks outside of our standard folks that. Tend to volunteer for these type, of these type of things, so.
And, yep. We will talk about that on meeting on Thursday. Few different ideas how to get more people involved that normally would not come to the front, you know, the front point, so.
Good.
Angela? Angela, Angela Laurie, whoever is going to, sorry.
I just wanted to do. A shout out to Christie first because she has. Added to our, in Google Drive, our. Important documents that have the school committee handbook and things like that. She's also updated the school committee portion of the website. So she's made it much easier for us to access things that we need, you know, whether it's the regional agreement or wanting contact. Contract question, a quick link to the policy book. So anyway, just thank you very much, Christie, for that. I appreciate it. My other comment I want to make about the goal to the new member goal is. Let me know if you can't find it. You can search for it by new member goal 2021. It is a pilot, so during the process, I'm hoping that Mike and. Would give us some feedback on the onboarding process so that we can tweak it. For May. Another new members maybe coming aboard. Laurie, do you want to add anything?
No, I agree with you. I had talked to Mike the other day and I said to him that his input is going to be really, really valuable. As we move forward, because that'll be the true test.
Yeah, I think. It'll be important, I think, instead of necessarily saying appointing or assigning Mike to. To one of the particular goals, I think, because he's new and coming through your process as well as. I think he can be beneficial to both groups. I would, what it was, what I, what I was going to say, because now that we initially, the goal number two really was driven by early on. Keith and Cliff, and I was sort of a third on it. But I think Mike can provide some value there because now we don't have, I want to make sure we have a resource in Berlin. As part of that goal as well, right? So Mike can be our conduit to Berlin folks in, in helping us drive. Interest in, because he's, you know, he knows that community much better than Keith and I would, right? So I think he can provide some help to both goals, so I don't want to necessarily label him as. Being part of one goal or another, because I think there's some value there. To assisting with both goals. So. With that being said, we're going to be moving to business items anyways, and I'm not sure if this should have been under business items, but I'm going to. Well, I need to appoint a mentor for Mike as part of that process. So after, you know, discussion Laurie and I talked about is, I'm going to appoint Laurie to be Mike's mentor as he moves. You know, into school committee and through the process and. You know, he's going to, it's going to be a quick mentorship in five months, because who knows if we'll all be. You know, come June, but, but so Laurie will be, will be acting as Mike's mentor and moving through that process. Any questions on that?
Thank you, Laurie.
Yeah, thank you, Laurie. Okay, moving to our business items and there's a couple in here I want, you know, we'll have a little bit of a discussion on as we just make sure we handle them appropriately. Business item number one, I'm appointing Christie Turgeon to be member of central office to be copied on all emails. Jeff, you want to kind of just give a quick high level why, what the, what the request is. As that relates. You're on mute, bud. Jeff?
Jim, can you ask the question again?
I just didn't know if you wanted to provide any updates on, you know, we're making sure Christie is being C C'd on all central office emails.
No, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. I mean, I, I think it's important that she is C C'd on them.
Okay, okay. So moving forward, Christie will be C C'd and all as a member of the center. She will be a member of the central office and be copied on all emails. I'm now going to appoint Superintendent Zhang Yi to the Assavet Valley Collaborative Board of Directors. Do we have any questions or concerns or comments as it relates to that? All right, so appointed. Item number three, had we were the. Committee member. Oh, okay. So this is the appointment of Mike to policy subcommittee. So during Mike and I's initial discussion and the feedback from everybody else in, in our meeting last week. We thought joining policies subcommittee would have been a good opportunity to get some fast. Injection of. Enthralling school committee policies and get going. So, and obviously that was a seat that Cliff had too, so it obviously helped us fill that seat. So we will be, be appointing Mike to that.
So Jim, that starts on the January 20th, for the January 21st meeting?
Yep.
Okay, so just ask Christie if you could forward information to Mike and confirm whether he can attend at that time and date, okay?
Yep, so we'll do that and then you guys can let me know if you still want me to join or not. It's, it's.
No, I don't, I don't think you need to. If Mike's going to be there. I, we just need to make sure that we've scheduled at a time that Mike can attend.
Okay, I will, we will, sure Christie's potentially listening, but I will confirm with Christie. For that. Okay, I need a motion, please, to approve, for the annual approval of school committee norms and standards.
Yeah, so. I'll second that.
Questions, discussion? Okay, hearing done, roll call. Laurie?
I.
Keith?
I.
Susan?
I.
Angela?
I.
Mike?
I.
I'm an I as well. The next item number five, I want to have a quick discussion about this. And see how we want to handle this before I ask for a motion to vote on it. We talked about it last meeting. And thank you to Angela and Susan, and I even saw some updates from Cliff in there. Prior to the end of the year and. Some updates that we've made. There's a few, there's some edits that need to be accepted, you know, officially. There's some, Angela had some questions and I'll work with her around the pieces of that that are going to fall in the report. We, what we do. Christie does submit all the reports together, the principles and all that stuff. It sounds like we want to keep those separate. The consensus from the committee tends to be, we want, we want to keep those, we want to keep those separate. So. Looking at that, we, we've done this in the past, or we can, there's two ways. The, the report officially is due tomorrow. So that's okay though, because in the, in my, in my four years now on committee. I, I think we submitted on time twice. So that's not a good thing. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not patting us on the back for that. We shouldn't, that shouldn't be the case. But I can ask for an extension from. From the town managers on submitting that. I can ask for an extension so that we can, I'm going to leave it up to the committee. We can vote as is. Today with accept, accepting the edits and the changes that will need to take place and then I can submit the report. Or if we're not comfortable, we want to consider tonight a first read and put the report back on for final vote on our next meeting. We can do that as well.
Well, are there, are there issues with the report as it stands right now? Are there questions or issues with? Their report?
There is still some editing that is required to take place. There's some edits that have been made that just need to be accepted and.
Just, you mean to get to a clean, final, right product?
Correct.
Do you mean?
Yep.
Or do you mean there's additional work to be done?
I, I'll leave, I'll leave that to the committee if they believe there's additional work to be done.
Well, I, I thought Angela did a really good job. Building out. Jim's initial report in areas that. Were identified. And I, I feel comfortable with what's there now.
Yeah, and the only question I had. Bob answered tonight during the meeting and that was about what, what we purchased with our CARES Act money initially. So I think what I have in there is correct, but I'm more curious about the others if you needed. Because I would say I think it's okay, but if the others needed to look at it more thoroughly, by all means. Cause obviously I think it's okay, but if the others needed to look at it more thoroughly, by all means. Or make additional updates.
I'm, I'm a proponent of, of voting on it. As is tonight, on, you know, knowing that we're gonna make the, the final edits that are required, and there may be one or two, you know, final small updates. But in an effort to expedite and, and getting us closer to being able to get this to. The towns on time, I'm in favor of voting on it this evening, but. If everybody's okay with that, I'd like to do that, and then we can. We, we can, we can finish that up and, and get that to the, to the district, to the towns as best as we can.
And who is, who is doing that final, accepting and making sure that's read over one last time after all that stuff is accepted in?
I, I'll, I'll do it, if you guys want me to do it, I don't mind doing it, I'll accept it and accept all the edits. And I may. I may do what I do now, there, I might, I might, I may send it to Angela and Susan just to prove, to make sure I didn't do anything incorrect. And. And, and then we'll send, before we send that off.
Okay, so we'll turn that around fast and try to meet the deadline and get to the third year, Jim.
Right, I know, I know. Okay, so then can I have a motion, please, to. Accept the school committee annual report as is with the expectations of the changes we discuss this evening.
So moved.
Again.
Thank you, alright, requires a roll call, Laurie?
Hi.
Keith?
Hi.
Susan?
Hi.
Angela?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
I'm an I as well, thank you. Could I have a, a motion, please, to accept the anonymous donation of four thousand dollars to the Tohonto baseball program?
So moved.
Second.
You, any discussion other than, thank you very, very much to an anonymous donor?
Amazing.
And it said that specifically that it was to be used for capital improvement. And do, what, what is that regarding, is there some particular thing we should be aware of?
I would assume it's a, the field, correct?
Field improvements?
That, that's what I assume, capital, right?
The, the uniforms could use some updating too. That was, that was a big, I think that was a big thing with. Parents last year, there were some issues with uniforms, I thought.
Susan, the, the, the use was communicated to, to Principal Tussary. I, I don't know exactly what the specific use was, but she's aware of what the donor wants it to be used for.
Okay, okay. Alright, thank you, yeah, and thank you to the donor, very generous.
I had a motion and I had a second. Roll call, Laurie?
Hi.
Keith?
Hi.
Susan?
Hi.
Angela?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. Okay, I'm gonna try to word this so that we can do this all in one vote. Could I please have a motion to approve the selection of consultant for Berlin Memorial Facilities Assessment? As stated during Bob's report, accepting, while accepting his choices of first, second, and third. Choices.
Yes.
That a motion?
Yes, that's a motion to accept, to approve the selection of the consultants according to. Our Director of Finance and Operations, first, second, and third choices determined by the committee he worked with.
Alright, do I have a second?
A second?
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, Laurie?
Hi.
Keith? Susan?
Hi.
Angela?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
I am an I as well, and item number eight, per our discussion earlier during superintendent evaluation subcommittee. Could I have a motion to accept the changes to the superintendent evaluation timeline?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you, discussion? Hearing none, Laurie?
Hi.
Keith? Susan?
Hi.
Angela?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. Thank you all, that concludes our business items, as you can see, our school committee feature agendas. Our next meeting is February ninth, and remember that we are having our meeting on the twenty third, it's our budget hearing, so.
Yeah, one question about that. Is that, do you reach out to? The relevant committees, send a notice or something to invite them to participate, or? How, how do you ensure that their right people are really hearing the presentation and having opportunity to ask questions?
So, the, they do receive the posting of our school committee meeting. Notes, but for the budget hearing, we specifically reach out to the towns to let them know, and I've actually spoken. With Jeff, I've reached out to Margaret Nutterwitz in Berlin and. Stan Rogalinski, who's the FinCom Chair, and, and also Chris Keith, and I'm gonna be meeting with them Friday. Great. Also reached out to Boylston, that meeting is not set yet, but the idea is particularly this year to get some. Early guidance on, on what they're, what they're seeking. And, and not just wait until the meeting and get, get, get kind of a response, because there's limited time between the end of February.
Right.
And the time we need our budget approved to. To make changes, and it's not, some of these things are not just changing a number in a spreadsheet. You know, you could have to renegotiate a contract, you could be dealing with things that impact the union, so. We're trying to move that process earlier by having these discussions now.
So you may not expect to, to see those people at the budget hearing?
I mean, we invite them, I know that they, they come sometimes. Scott Hawkins always used, yeah, Scott Hawkins always used to come when he was on the Fin, FinCom. But we also, we have attended their FinCom meetings with updates as well. I think they had a joint FinCom Selectmen Meeting in, in Berlin that Jeff and I went to last year. I don't think Berlin has been as concerned with where we were financially. Boylston is, has kind of had the significant increases the last couple of years, so. I think things went smoothly with Berlin, but a big function of that was the dollars involved. So we're really gonna, we're gonna try to spend a little bit more time focusing on Boylston this year and trying to. Get that process to be a little bit more collaborative, instead of kind of getting it a little bit fur down, far down the path and seeing that we're in a different place.
Will these be, will this hearing be posted on the Facebook, you know, town, neighbors connect pages? As well as official postings, you know?
My, my, my part's to reach out to, to the town.
Would be posting it out, right?
Yeah, we, I mean, we can, it can be posted wherever. And we can, we can, I mean, we'll take suggestions, I don't think I can post to Facebook in Berlin, I know that.
Yeah, I think, I think, okay, okay, I think it would be useful to, you know, get the word out. The more people are familiar with what, you know, the expenses are prior to needing to vote on those things, the better.
Okay.
So, I think. My two cents, thank you.
Okay. Alright, that concludes this evening's agenda. Could I please have a motion to adjourn the Berlin Boys Regional Transition School Committee meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Laurie?
Hi.
Keith?
Hi.
Susan?
Hi.
Angela?
Hi.
Mike?